Valentine's Day. We appreciate folks that have come out tonight. So, we are reconvening our meeting tonight. We met earlier to go into closed session. And the city convened in closed session to meet with staff and the city's labor attorney to receive a briefing on and discuss matters related to collective bargaining negotiations with local 400. So there are no changes to the agenda this evening. And just as a quick heads up for folks, tonight we have our legislative updates. And then after comments, we will have two work sessions this evening. The first is the quarterly financial report number for the second quarter. And then the second item is the FY 2024 budget amendment number three. And so those are the items that we'll be talking about tonight. In terms of upcoming agendas, on Monday is President's Day. The city offices and facilities are closed Sunday and Monday for President's Day. On Wednesday, February the 21st, the city council will convene its regular meeting. Upcoming items include a voting session on the first reading ordinance approving FY 2021 budget amendment number three, work session, council FY 2025 budget priorities. We'll be talking about the recenter redevelopment and next steps. We'll also have a discussion on amending the city code to add a ban on gasoline-powered leaf blowers. On Wednesday, February the 28th, we'll meet at 7:30. We'll have a voting session, our second reading ordinance approving the FY 2024 budget amendment number three. We'll also have two work sessions, proposed multifamily housing tax credit and library construction project update. And on Thursday, February the 29th through Friday, March the 1st, is the Maryland Mayor's Association Winter Conference, which I will be attending. And so with that, we are going to move into our legislative updates. So just want to check to see if our lobbyist is on the line. Glad to see you, Anne Seacott. And Anne is our lobbyist in Annapolis and has been very, very busy. So we are... Great. So Anne, I'll turn it over to you for the update. Can you hear us?
Thank you. I do need to say the audios, I don't know if it's my computer, but it's just a little difficult to hear right now. So I will do my best to hear if there are any questions. But I think I heard my cue. So, good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day. We are about a little more than a third of the way through session. We got through bill introduction deadlines last week, which was great. Got about 3,800 bills that have been introduced. The mayor was one of the... was in good company yesterday in testifying on behalf of Delegate Janelle Wilkins' bill to enabling bill for just cause evictions for local laws to be established. Thought that hearing went really well. And I thought Delegate Wilkins did a fabulous job. And we finally have environmental bills. They seemed like a long time in coming, at least some of the bigger ones, the priority ones. And so we'll be pulling together some testimony for those bills that are scattered over the next few weeks. But starting next week, we'll have some of the priority ones that are coming forward. Those are the highlights right now. Things are really going to pick up. It was getting bit busy this week, and it's only going to get busier in the next few weeks. So we might have a lot more to be reporting in the coming weeks.
Great. Thank you so much, Anne. And can you hear me better now? Awesome.
That's great. That's great.
Great. And so, thank you so much. As you mentioned, just cause was yesterday. We also were able to submit testimony in support of SB 601 around street racing and increasing the fines and penalties for folks that are involved in street races. So, very happy we were able to get that in as well, given what transpired over the weekend. And so, just want to check with my colleagues to see if there are any other questions around upcoming bills. I know that there's just a lot of things that are, that folks are drafting and working on. So, Councilmember Dabala.
Yes, thank you. So I can work with you on the climate bills and environmental bills later this week. But the question that I have is there a hearing coming up next week for Delegate Charcutian's state highway bill? Did I not say that loud enough?
Okay, let's see. The question from Councilmember Dabala was whether or not there's a date scheduled for Delegate Charcutian's state highway bill.
So, she's got several bills in. So I'll go back to the bill chart and look for the delegates' bills that are the ones that we had been looking at.
Thank you.
Okay. That works.
But I'll find them, I'll get them to you ASAP.
Excellent. And, Anne, and if you don't have this at the top of your head, that's fine too. The sprinkler bill?
Yes.
That one is...
I'm sorry.
When is that one coming up?
I have the chart in front of me. I just have to find the right one. Let's see. So yes, the sprinkler bill, the House bill is being heard next week. So that's the bill that we had weighed in on last year. I think the bill was done very quickly last year. I think it was put together a little better this year. I think folks are feeling like it's just a better written bill. And we have time to get the testimony in on that for the hearing on the 20th.
On the 20th. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Okay. Well, Anne, thank you so much. And also just want to remind my colleagues, I know that I will be there as well, as District 20 Night is on Monday. And so definitely want to encourage people. I believe we will have a shuttle for District 20 Night on Monday. Yes. And that'll be a part of, I believe, some other comments that'll be happening this evening. So, just wanted to remind everyone to come out. It's an opportunity to go down to Annapolis to meet the District 20 delegation, but also to sit in and actually watch things go into session. So, thank you all so much. And thank you, Anne, for all of your dedication. I know that there's just a ton of bills that are happening right now. Yesterday in Annapolis was very busy, lots of people. And that just goes to show the amount of bills that are coming before committee right now. So, thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening. And we are going to move on to public comments. We do not have any voting items this evening. So if you have any public comments on general items, please feel free to come forward.
I'm Adam Mayor and Council. My name is Saul Schneiderman. I live in Lincoln Avenue. I'm in Ward 3. And I've come before the council tonight to urge you to pass a resolution in support of a ceasefire in Gaza. But before I do, I want to first say how proud I am to be in a city that has enshrined collective bargaining in its law. I'm a former president of my union at the Library of Congress, and I'm so proud for all of you to engage in this process because collective bargaining is the key to workplace democracy. I also want to thank my councilman, Randy Gibson, for informing my neighbors and I about events that happened here in the council. And I also want to say hi to Terry Siemens, who I remember being in his living room following the death of Lee Jordan and discussing the possibility of having a statue made to Mr. Jordan in our city when Lee's family intervened and said, "No, they would rather have the ball field, the athletic field, what we used to call the junior high school named for him." And I'm happy to say I was walking around there the other day, and there's a beautiful plaque, two beautiful plaques to Lee Jordan that we can all be proud of. According to Oxfam International, over 250 Palestinians a day are dying in Gaza, and more are at risk due to hunger and disease. Now, the majority of unions that represent America's workers have called for a ceasefire in Palestine and Israel. The National Teachers Union, the Communication Workers, the Auto Workers, the Service Employees, the Postal Workers, and most recently, the AFL-CIO. And over 45 cities have called for a ceasefire in Gaza, including Chicago, Akron, Providence, Madison, Seattle, and Albany. And maybe the council might want to ask our staff to do some research and find out how many cities are and towns, but it's over 45 now. Amnesty International and Doctors Without Borders have called for a ceasefire. Why have these unions and why have these cities passed ceasefire resolutions? Because whenever there's a disproportionate use of force, for example, dropping two-ton bombs on crowded neighborhoods, and disproportionate use of force and an indiscriminate killing of civilians, there is the danger of a genocide. And we should not be bystanders to this because it's immoral. Israel has a right to defend itself, but the world is crying out and saying, "The time has come for that defense to change from military might to diplomacy." Please add Tacoma Park to the list of cities and towns that refuse to be a bystander to this horrible war. Pass a resolution to restore humanitarian aid, release all of the hostages, and implement an immediate ceasefire.
Thank you very much.
This is not meddling in foreign affairs or politics. It's all about the humanitarian impulse here in Tacoma Park.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other general public comments this evening?
Good evening. I'm Sue Miller from Ward 3. I'm Jewish. And as a Jew, I am urging my city to join the call for ceasefire in Gaza and to release all hostages now. I want to address the concern expressed last week about feeling unsafe. If I feel unsafe today, it's because I believe the unrelenting and disproportionate response by the Israeli government to the horrific October 7th attack is making the world less safe for all of us each day. I feel unsafe because the possibility of peace for Israel and Palestine seems to recede each day. I feel unsafe because the bombardment of Gaza into rubble contravenes international humanitarian law, prevents access to aid, and thus reinforces antisemitism around the world. So to be clear, calling for a ceasefire is not antisemitic. I draw your attention to the fact that 278 rabbis and rabbinical students have called for a ceasefire. More than 500 staff from Jewish organizations and synagogues have called for a ceasefire. And dozens of Israeli peace organizations have called for a ceasefire. Even President Biden has now stated that the Israeli military response is, quote, "over the top." Meanwhile, as you heard, some 50 American cities have passed resolutions or proclamations, including Chicago, Seattle, Detroit, San Francisco, Oakland, Atlanta, Albany, Minneapolis, and Providence. So at this point, does it even matter if Tacoma Park passes a ceasefire resolution? It matters because Tacoma Park has a tradition of advocating for peace. It matters because Arab-Americans are part of the fabric of our community here. And yes, it matters to me as a Jew who feels compelled to speak out in this moment. This morning, rabbis set out on a pilgrimage alongside Protestants, Catholics, Quakers, Unitarians, Muslims, and Hindus to call for a ceasefire. They are praying with their legs, walking from Philadelphia to DC over the next week through the frigid winter weather. Let's greet them when they arrive next Wednesday with a Tacoma Park resolution for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other general public comments?
Hi. My name's Judy Beth Green. I'm a resident of Tacoma Park, and I have been a resident for over 14 years. And I have roots in the community that go back for over 20 years. Like the previous speaker, I am Jewish, and I dearly value our diversity, our humanity care, and our respect for each other. I want to join the previous call by Tacoma Park citizens that we've heard today, along with Jomana Musa and Mohammed Sharif and others, to call for an immediate ceasefire. Rather than give the tally of Palestinians, including women and children killed, let's just stop with unconscionable. To this end, I ask for a resolution that the Biden administration secure an immediate stop in the fighting, secure release of the remaining hostages, secure surge, excuse me, humanitarian aid to Gaza to address the horrific conditions now existing, and to lay out a comprehensive two-state regional peace initiative, one that includes a commitment to recognize Palestinian state and to assure the community, the security of both Israelis and Palestinians. Our humanity is bound up in this together. As the U.S. provides significant funding to Israel and the continued demolition of Gaza and a significant portion of its people cannot be calibrated with our human values. I thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to the need for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional general public comments in the room? We'll move to virtual comments after we've completed comments in the room.
Thank you. This is Dwayne Scott. I'd like to make a comment.
I'm so sorry, Dwayne. Can we please put the people that are virtual on mute? We're going to go for the people that are in the room first, and then we will move to the people that are virtual.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie Tackett Copel. I'm a Ward 2 resident and a resident of Tacoma Park for the last 10 years. My family moved here because we knew Tacoma Park to be a place with a vibrant public square, a place where people take the time to engage in making that so. And in that spirit, thank you for what you each do every day. And most importantly tonight, what I want to start with is saying thank you to our neighbors who have testified so powerfully tonight and over the last few weeks, so many of them calling for you, our elected officials, to commit to a ceasefire resolution. We watched all of their testimonies as a family. And without exception, I found them to be speaking with such compassion, to be modeling such authentic solidarity, values that I believe are the core of who we aspire to be here in Tacoma Park. And so tonight, I'm here to add my voice to theirs, to ask for your leadership and your action. I want to be additive to the voices of others who have spoken with such unity across differences in our lived experiences, our nationalities, our ages, races, ethnicities, and religions. And so here's what I want to add into the pot for your consideration. I am 100% certain that everyone in this room agrees that all people deserve to live in safety and freedom. And yet, in this moment, too many people here, yes, here in Tacoma Park, not just elsewhere, are hesitant to act or to speak in alignment with this position. And much of that hesitancy is rightly or not connected to fear of being called out. I know some of you named ways that you are weighing safety as you consider whether to move forward with a resolution. And I'm grateful for your care and consideration, and I'll name that taking no action does not promote safety. Even locally, it prioritizes comfort. Expressing solidarity for Palestinians or calling for a ceasefire are not acts of antisemitism. Here's a concrete example of why it matters here to use your podium to call for a ceasefire. Right here within the borders of our city and county, we're seeing needed conversations being chilled in our schools, among other places, of course. As public school parents, some of you have received messages from a school leader perpetuating the myth that expressing solidarity with Palestinians is antisemitic. Many students are sharing that they don't feel safe because their existence is being erased. And as a public school parent, I believe teachers and students should be able to openly discuss their concerns for Palestinian human rights in school without fear of retaliation. And doing so is critical to ensuring students believe and are supported and equipped with tools to understand and dismantle antisemitism, Islamophobia, and other forms of hate-based expression. And so if this were show and tell, I'd point out, we tell teenagers in the city we believe in their power and position them to vote. We, you taking a stand, shows them why their vote matters. We need you to be bold and issue a ceasefire resolution. Do it for our children. Do it for my 15-year-old, who will turn 16 just before next year's elections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other general public comments this evening? Going once? Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Sherman.
Last week, I decided not to speak because I was so moved by everything that people said about what's going on in Gaza. But at some point, I thought I have to get in something about something happening locally. It has to do with the problem I spoke about a few weeks ago at the intersection of Carroll and Philadelphia, right there by the fire station. The state highway administration widened the sidewalk at Carroll and Philadelphia from five feet to seven feet. That made it difficult for buses to turn right without climbing the curb. And if you go to that curb, you can see the track marks of the tires of the vehicles that have had to climb that curb. It's visible. You can see the problem. I've taken videos. And I was on the F-4 bus this morning when the same thing happened. I'm on my way to Silver Spring. The bus gets to that corner, tries to take the turn, is forced to climb the curb. So we all, you know, go like this on the bus as the bus goes up and then comes down again. The solution, I believe, is to take at least one of those two feet that were added away. We would be left with a six-foot sidewalk that would still be one foot wider than it was before. That has traffic calming benefits. The extra foot, I mean, but it would not be so severe the way it is now that buses are forced to climb the curb. In the meantime, the state highway administration has proposed some changes, which I've distributed to members of the council, and I have additional copies I can leave here for those in the room, proposing a whole redesign of how the lanes at that intersection work, moving the stop line on Philadelphia back on the assumption that all traffic coming from Silver Spring will be stopped while traffic is turning right from Carroll to Philadelphia. That's not how it works now. That traffic is stopped only for a portion of the time, and then it resumes. So you have traffic coming from Silver Spring going out East West Highway, and you have traffic coming from New Hampshire Avenue going north. That two-way traffic would no longer be possible under the design in front of you now. It would also eliminate one of the two eastbound lanes on Carroll Avenue, which make it more difficult for people to make that turn. And more important, postpone the moment at which traffic backed up on Carroll coming from Old Town can finally separate those going out Ethan Allen from those going north on Carroll Avenue. That's a, you know, it's, you've seen it every afternoon during rush hour, right? Traffic backed up on Carroll. So, please take a look at this plan. To me, it's overkill. To me, the solution is much simpler. Take that sidewalk that was widened from five feet to seven feet and take it back to at least six feet, splits the difference. It will solve the problem without having to go through all of the changes that the state is now proposing. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other general public comments?
If there are other people to speak on Israel and Palestine, I'll wait.
Come on down. Come on. Come on. Come on, 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 come on. We have other items on the agenda to get to tonight.
You're prescient. I am going to speak about the minor master plan.
Go right ahead.
Happy Valentine's Day. Mr. Disparitov, welcome. Congratulations. I look forward to working with you. To the mayor and council, thank you for appointing me to the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs. Again, to the mayor and council, thank you for calling out, especially Councilmember Small and Councilmember Hanzak, the Montgomery County Public Schools for neglecting the long-needed improvements too, and the more likely replacement of Piney Branch Elementary School, which both of my daughters attended. You revealed the depth of the problem, an inadequate, overcrowded facility, and the scarcity of available land needed to build a new facility. Thank you. But isn't that yet another reason to oppose the minor master plan? A compelling reason? I think it is. At a recent work session of the Montgomery County Council, four changes to the master plan were discussed. Let me explain why these may be changes, that these may be changes, sort of changes, we hope for changes, appear to be no more than a fig leaf and a campaign flyer in the making. First, removing rent stabilization language does not mean the powers that be won't continue to push you to repeal rent stabilization. Doesn't matter what is said or not said in the plan. Second, increasing the percentage of required MPDU's to 15% is great. In a 100-unit building, that means an additional two units. But has requiring MPDU's effectively addressed the affordable housing crisis? Perhaps not. From 1976 to 2022, 46 years, a little more than 6,100 units were built. Only a little more than 3100 are still under control, the county's language. In July 2022, there were approximately 470,000 units in the county. 61% is 1.5%. 3100 is half of that. And not everyone who needs an affordable home will qualify for an MPDU. According to the county, minimum annual household incomes varies from property to property, and prospective tenants are directed to call the property directly to find out. Third, calling the planning board to consider lower building heights in the municipal district doesn't pass the laugh test. Does anyone seriously think that the site of the Sam Abbott Citizen Center, in which we are right now, the new library in the Piney Branch Elementary School, will be replaced by 150 or 125-foot buildings? Please tell us why either height limit is even being considered. Finally, if it means more than the Maple Avenue corridor, if district, if expanding, I'm sorry, let me try again. Finally, if it means more than the Maple Avenue corridor, the door will be open for elimination of all affordable housing for our neighbors if, as Councilmember Stewart has suggested, that the affordability be met... has suggested, that the affordability be measured district-wide. I don't know what she means by district-wide. Please find out. But please, please, preserve our neighbors' homes on Maple Avenue. As I said before, we're all in this together. We have to get this right. And I do want to associate myself very much with my good friend Saul Schneiderman and Sue Miller as regards the peace resolution.
Thank you so much.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day. I'm Kelsar Talat, and I live in Ward Five. I was a little discombobulated last week. I am here today to again call for Tacoma Park to issue a ceasefire resolution. You won't even be the first municipality in Maryland to do so. Anna Rundell just sent a letter to the president calling for a ceasefire. Howard County has already passed a resolution. You aren't paving the road. You're just traveling a well-worn road of people who call for peace. I'm an Egyptian-American. I'm a physician. I'm a public health practitioner. I'm a teacher. I'm a parent. And as somebody who is Arab-American, I feel like the brutality that is happening in Gaza would not be acceptable anywhere else in the world. This is the most severe loss of life that has happened in the 21st century anywhere in the world. 250 people are dying every day, most of them children. More than the population of Tacoma Park, almost twice the population of Tacoma Park has died in the last four months. Again, most of them children. They don't have access to food. They don't have access to water. They are now crammed into a very small part of Gaza that is now being threatened with an invasion and bombardment, where 1.5 million people are living in a place 12th of the size of Montgomery County. It doesn't take a lot of courage to say peace is a good thing, but it shows a lot of cowardice not to. And I'm asking you to stand up and be brave. I heard from Kara last week that there are people who are concerned about safety. Well, let me tell you that my 17-year-old has been called a terrorist more times than she can count in school because of her heritage. And when that's brought up, there is no talk of safety. She doesn't feel safe. The Arab-Americans in our community don't feel safe when we can't even call for peace in our own town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Calling Cortez Ward One. Less eloquently, but with others who have spoken tonight, I really want to urge that the mayor and council pass a resolution as soon as possible to call for an immediate, complete bilateral ceasefire to protect families in Gaza, the West Bank, and Israel. I can't, what the speaker who was just here said was so moving, I just, I think that that has been something that we've all been really, it's been hard for us to witness, and we are all witnessing it. If it makes it any easier, one possibility would be that you could endorse and/or adapt the very thoughtful, careful, and strong statement that our local congressman Jamie Raskin has made. And Senator Van Hollen, by the way, today just joined a letter to the president with other senators, calling for a, also for a ceasefire. But I just want to repeat Jamie Raskin's wording here because I think that, again, it's something you could endorse. And Mayor, seriously, it'd be wonderful if you could pass a resolution, and then you could personally reach out to Congressman Raskin and our two senators. And not only does that give them the political support they need to do the right thing, but everyone's going to know Tacoma Park thought about doing this, and if you decide to do nothing, that will take away from them the political support they need to do the right thing. Anyway, here are the words, some of the words that Jamie Raskin has used. He says, "The world must urgently prioritize," and of course, we can put that in the name of the U.S. government, working on this, too, "immediate return of the hostages, a complete bilateral ceasefire, the removal of the Hamas terrorists from operational control of Gaza, the end of the bombardment of the civilian population, and a global humanitarian surge of food, water, medical supplies, and power to the besieged Gazan population to end this wretched disaster of human suffering." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Good evening. I'm humbled by the words of my fellow residents, and I want to strongly support my fellow residents in demanding a resolution for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. It's unbelievable. Now for my more generic comments, which pale in comparison to the requests of so many rightful and righteous residents. My comments are about Budget Amendment Three. First, thanks to Chairman Jerome Powell for raising the federal funds rate, which along with some grants resulted in $86,000 of additional city revenue. But it also needs to be noted that expenses went up $214,000, and the current FY '24 deficit is over $2.8 million at the halfway mark. Its instructive regarding the budget is the FY '23 ACFR, the financial report. Noteworthy is the fact that the city government appropriated an additional $2.5 million in amendments above the original appropriated budget of $34 million for a total budgeted total deficit in the last year of over $9.25 million. That's what you budgeted. Also important is a proposed FY '25 budget forecast that contained a 10% deficit of over $3 million. How can the council countenance such a proposal as the council has requested more revenue from state and county officials over the last few weeks? So we once again salute the council on their selection of such a seasoned veteran of public management, our new city manager, Mr. Dispirito. We also share our best wishes as he faces these challenging times. I have a list of suggestions that I will send to him on the upcoming budget, but here I will include just a few. Please begin from revenue. I hope that you will propose a budget based on the constant yield to be forwarded to senior staff. Have them respond with exactly what they would need to do to meet their budget numbers. They are the most qualified to assess what is absolutely necessary and what can wait or be foregone. This prevailing method of maintenance of effort is no longer acceptable. This is the approach that has led the city to overspending in deficit year over year over year. The city manager should allocate financial resources at the same percentage rate as last year, based on revenue, not based on some wish list. Next, institute some system of metrics. Even doctors and lawyers, as well as tradespeople, keep hours worked and what to charge it to. Council members have repeatedly asked questions of the staff about how long, how much, how many people, and how many consultants. Metrics would provide accurate answers and help to guide the council. It's also very important that we are accurate, so please, correct me if I've misstated any of the facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Hi, good evening. I'm Gemana Musa. I'm a 22-year resident of Ward Six in Tacoma Park, and I wanted to read a little bit from a resolution that the council passed two years ago. "Be further resolved, the city council calls for humanitarian and other vital assistance, not only for the citizens of Ukraine, but for all civilians facing unprovoked or illegal military attacks, and for all displaced person and refugees worldwide, and in particular for displaced persons from majority Black and Brown nations, with a focus on addressing longstanding systemic racism, gaps in attention and support too big to comprehend, which they continue to face. Be further resolved, the city of Tacoma Park will seek opportunities through art, film, and other presentations to further raise awareness of, share information about, and build support for mitigating the impacts of war and violence on civilians throughout the world, with a specific focus on war and violence against Black and Brown communities, which often receive less international media coverage." Three of you are on the council that passed this resolution. I would love to know that your concern for Black and Brown people under bombardment in need of humanitarian assistance applies to Palestinians. On January 31st, there was a decision in the case Defense for Children of International Palestine versus Joe Biden that was charging complicity in genocide. And federal Judge Jeffrey White said in the decision, although he ruled that he did not have standing to rule on the case, he said, "It is every individual's obligation to confront the current siege in Gaza." It's a federal judge. He went on to say, even though he was, this is one of the rare cases in which the preferred outcome is inaccessible to the court, "But," he said, "as the ICJ has found, it is plausible that Israel's conduct amounts to genocide. This court implores the defendants to examine the results of their unflagging support of the military siege against Palestinians in Gaza." In that, there was a declaration filed on November 13th by Dr. John Cox, who directs the Center for Holocaust Genocide and Human Rights at UNC Charlotte, Dr. Victoria Sanford, who is a professor and also an affiliated scholar, I'm going to get their titles right, the Center for the Study of the Holocaust Genocide and Crimes Against Humanity at CUNY, and Dr. Barry Trachtenberg, who is the Rubin Presidential Chair of Jewish History at Wake Forest. They said, "The Israeli government proposals to force all Palestinians from Gaza to the Sinai Desert, as laid out and documented prepared by the Israeli Intelligence Ministry on October 13th, is particularly chilling in view of the 20th-century historical precedents. On October 12th, over 1 million Palestinians were directed to leave the northern Gaza Strip within just 24 hours, producing what the United Nations called devastating humanitarian consequences that could transform what is already a tragedy into a calamitous situation. Expelled Palestinians have since faced regular air attacks while en route southward. The ICRC warned on October 12th that hospitals risk turning into morgues without electricity, a prediction that has now become fact. This has occurred in just over one month since the beginning of the Israeli attack, with no end in sight, and new and particularly terrible chapter in the Israeli drive to realize a greater Israel without Palestinians." That was filed November 13th. We're five months in. They are now crowded in Rafah and about to be pushed out of their homeland. And you all are sitting and wringing hands about, should Tacoma Park weigh in and call for peace, for civilians to be fed? I'm going to go over, and I'm just going to tell you I'm going over. We talk about safety. I want to talk about Wadiya Fayyum, the six-year-old boy who was stabbed to death in his home in Illinois by his landlord because he was Palestinian. I want to talk about Hashem Awartani, a Brown student, Canaan Abdulhamid, a student at Haverford College, Tahsin Ahmed, a student at Trinity College, all 20-years-old friends, Palestinian-American and Palestinian, who were shot in Vermont. Hashem is expected to never be able to walk again. I want to talk about the Columbia students who had a pro-Palestinian march, were attacked with chemical weapons, many of them hospitalized. About Telfik Al-Jekh, a 17-year-old American from New Orleans who was shot dead in the West Bank in January. Zakaria Duar, in Austin, Texas, where just two weeks before, one of my friends had to cancel an event due to credible security threats, who was stabbed in Austin after being called many racial slurs, wearing his kaffiyah, being out protesting. Mahamad Al-Khdour, a 17-year-old American who was shot on Saturday in the West Bank Village of Bidu. These are not the Americans that President Biden talks about, that, well, you know, their deaths won't go unanswered. Palestinian deaths often go unanswered.
Thank you.
And so I want to, I'm going to finish. I know I'm going over.
I'm really sorry. We have a number of people here today to speak, and I've allowed you to go over.
I understand that I'm going to finish. Five weeks before he died, Professor, you can sanction me somehow. Five weeks before he died, Professor Rafat Al-Rir, who is well-known in the world as an academic, as a poet, wrote his own obituary, and I'm going to read it to you. He said, "If I must die, you must live to tell my story, to sell my things, to buy a piece of cloth and some strings, make it white with a long tail, so that a child somewhere in Gaza, while looking heaven in the eye, awaiting his dad who left in a blaze, bid no one farewell, not even to his flesh, not even to himself, sees the kite, my kite, you made, flying up above, thinks for a moment, then an angel is there to bring him back love. If I must die, let it bring hope, let it be a temple. I'll just remind you, Audrey's always words, your silence will not protect you. Say something."
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Okay. No more general public comments this evening. No worries. Do we have any virtual comments this evening? Sir, you've already made a comment. Please allow other people to speak. Sir, you've already used your three minutes for this evening. Please allow others to speak. I've allowed everyone to take more time this evening than the three minutes. Sir, sir, I've allowed people to go over all evening. That three-minute mark hit, and for you as well, you went over. And I did not, I tried my best to preserve the ability for people to finish their statements. But we do have other business to tend to this evening, and I'm trying to be respectful of not only your time, but the time of the council. So if you have comments, please come down. I'm trying to allow people to finish their statements, but you have to request additional time. You can ask for up to five minutes if you submit your request ahead of time. So I'm trying to be mindful of everyone's time this evening. Here you go. Thanks. Thank you very much. There you go. Thanks.
I'm just going to have a quote here, because I know I spoke last week. "Kids in Gaza are now dying from the deliberate withholding of food. In addition to the horror of that news, one other thing is true. That is a war crime. That is a war crime. It is a textbook war crime, and that makes those who orchestrate it war criminals." Chris Van Hollen. Chris Van Hollen said that last night. And so, I don't know. I don't consider Chris Van Hollen to be somebody who doesn't want safety in the community. Never known him to be that in all the years he's represented me. Don't think he's somebody who, I was at a Jews for another candidate, Jewish people did not have my view for a candidate for Senate this year, and believe me, he is not loved, but he's taken on in some of those communities, but he has taken that principled stand, and he's in the most deliberative body out there, not a grassroots council. So I don't understand how Senator Van Hollen can say that, because if it's a textbook crime and kids in these schools, it's not going to be in their textbooks if nobody opposes it. I know from my law school, I've heard of Tacoma Park before I even knew what it was because it was one of those cities where teenagers could vote. Why? Because it was in my textbook. We know of cities in the country that do things. And the fact that Anna Rundell County has beaten us, and Howard County, I mean, come on, it's really glaring, and it's kind of shocking. So, you know, now we're saying follow Chris Van Hollen. I don't think we're going to have President Biden there, but if we keep waiting, we might. Thank you.
Thank you very much. General public comments?
Good evening. My name is Leona Smith. I live in Ward One. I spoke last week. Following the discussion, I have to admit, I was very, very disturbed by the comments about being concerned about safety, and that several of you had said that you had gotten feedback from people in Tacoma Park about safety. I think if we're honest, the concerns about safety are people who look like me. I'm a white woman. My family, part of my family is Ashkenazi Jewish. My daughter is Palestinian. She's Muslim. When she was in third grade at Piney Branch after 9/11, she was called sand N-word. She was called a terrorist. She was called Taliban. There was never any idea about keeping her safe. Other people have talked about that, and I think that is really important. So many of my neighbors and friends, who are also Ashkenazi, are saying to me in whispers that they are afraid to speak out because people who have been so, for so long, supporting Israel and supporting what has been happening for decades have done such a snow job on all of us and have made it that you feel fearful to speak the truth on this issue. So I am disturbed because I feel like Palestinians, their lives matter. Palestinian-Americans, like my daughter, her life matters. She is over in Palestine right now. She teaches, she works, I'm sorry, as a college counselor at a school. The Army Jeeps were inside the compound of the school yesterday. That is terrifying, and it is nothing, nothing. That is terrifying, and it is nothing, nothing compared to what's going on in Gaza and what they are facing. So please do not talk about safety concerns for people who look like me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional public comments in the room? Okay. Do we have any public comments online?
We have one comment online, one additional comment online, Mr. Duane Scott. Duane, you have the floor.
Thank you. You know, I moved today to, good evening, I should say, Mayor CCN Council members. I'm Duane Scott. I am Ward 6 resident, been living in Tacoma Park for the past 10 years. I moved today to urge the council to, as many of my other neighbors, colleagues, and friends have said this evening and over the past few weeks, to strongly urge the council to pass a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. We're witnessing in real time a humanitarian disaster. Children are being killed, maimed, families destroyed, separated. And we, you know, we can't let our silence be considered consent. We can't allow these atrocities to go unanswered. A ceasefire is necessary. It's important. I can't look away because to do so would be a failure to acknowledge the brutality that is occurring across the globe in Gaza. It's, the suffering is very hard to imagine, but we must speak on it. We must talk about it. We must call for it to end. One of the other things that has gripped me is the way the press in Palestine, of Palestinian journalists, has been affected. They are being denied the opportunity to speak on these atrocities. They're being targeted and systematically removed, so that we are not able to get the full picture of everything that's going on. So it is time for the Tacoma Park Council to adopt a measure condemning the violence that we are seeing and demand peace. The resolution should also call for the return of hostages, and it should call for an end to all the bombardment, and also call for humanitarian aid to be extended and allowed into the Palestinians in Gaza. Food, medicine, water, all of those things are being denied. We have to, we must speak up to ensure that those, the minimum happen in order to preserve humanity in Gaza. Again, as I say, we must not let our, must not let silence be considered to be consent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we're gonna move on to council comments, but first I would like to address the audience this evening. First, I want to thank you all for coming out. It is, and to let you all know that there's a member, there are members of council that have been working collaboratively to draft a resolution. It is our hope to have that resolution ready to put on the agenda, but I do want to thank my colleagues who've been working alongside myself to put something together. I hear everyone. I hear you all, but hearing is not enough. It's not enough to see the atrocities. It's not enough to hear the stories. We have to do something. So I appreciate everyone that has come out tonight and making sure that, you know, we've gotten your emails, we've gotten your draft language, we've received that feedback. And so now is the time for members of council to work through the process that we have by having some of our colleagues come together to put pen to paper on a resolution. So with that, I am going to move on to other members of council who have comments. Councilmember Gibson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I thank you, the mayor also, for helping to steer the resolution, which, a resolution, as I've indicated before, I do support a resolution on ceasefire, and we are working to choose the right words for this community. Couple other things I want to respond to Mark Sherman's comment about the plans to redo the intersection, or part of the intersection at Carroll and Philadelphia, and that I have spoken, passed on information to the businesses affected that may be impacted there so that they can be involved in this process. I've learned that SHA, State Highway Administration, isn't necessarily particularly transparent about when they're gonna do it and whether there's any resident input involved at all, but I'm trying to do my part to share that information and make sure there is feedback. Perhaps there is a better solution than the one that's been presented here. Also want to say that with regard to the minor master plan, which is still in process with the county, and I am disappointed, or I'm disheartened, I guess, to learn that one of our experts in our community, one of our environmental scientists, Paul Kristowski, has basically given up on trying to look at the climate assessment, which the planning board has done. He's indicated that he wasn't able to get the information he needed from the planning board, and so he's basically given up and he is, he doesn't know that there's a viable path or what that path might be to attain zero net greenhouse gas emissions in 2035 with or without the project build-out. On a more positive note, I want to thank more than 200 residents of Ward 3 that have responded to my survey in terms of budget priorities and city services. I'm anxious just to read that. We have one more day. If anybody in Ward 3 has not submitted your survey, if you've not gotten a link from me, please do, but I'm real pleased to have more than 200 responses thus far. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBala.
First, to the, to the, thank you for coming out. I didn't say anything last week because I still wasn't feeling very well, but I appreciate all of your comments, and I take them to heart. And you've heard the mayor's summary of where we are on, I'm working through this for more practical concerns. No, that's not right. On another note altogether, thank you to the chief and to the city TV for setting up on such short order a Ward 2 safety meeting to talk about the issues on New Hampshire and East West Highway last Saturday night, and many other issues of safety in Ward 2, March 19th, Tuesday, at the rec center, and there'll be plenty of publicity. And I will take questions from residents, as will Kathy Plevy and the police department, so that the police chief can be, and staff can be informed and answer your questions when y'all show up. And thank you to the city manager for your time in Ward 2 on Tuesday. We had a good run, and anyone wants to know the loop or who we visited or where we went, just get in touch with me. I'll also have it in my newsletter this week. And third, I went Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday, to a county council economic briefing. For anyone who's interested, I can share the slides. They had their, both the planning department and their economic department did a presentation projecting on county revenue and health, not about the budget, but about the economy. It was very interesting, sets a background for all of us, I think, in what's going on. As a summary, as a quick summary, it's not the lack of jobs, it's the lack of people to fill them, and that's housing. And I think that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember DeBala. Councilmember Small, you're up next.
Why, thank you, Mayor. I have several things to say, not the least of which being that I am hardened by the people who have come out to express their support for what should have been an imminently reasonable thing to have done in an imminently more effective amount of time in a city like ours. Notwithstanding that, I can tell you officially that there is no group of emails and chatter back and forth of anyone asking about language. It's a group of people over there. Additionally, as we move forward and we talk about things like your concerns about state highway and their inability to put in the concrete correctly, even though they painted everything, and then immediately coming back over there, it is also true that they have done nothing along New Hampshire Avenue from University all the way to Larch, and even at the corner that our police department was so dutiful in showing up to first, particularly since it's not our jurisdiction. Now, I have been speaking about several things consistently since I've been on this council. I've been talking about state highway, I've been talking about institutional neglect of both our city, our county, and our state agencies, and the lack of good order and/or routine processes by which anyone in the council would discuss things. Like, those are things, those things are true. The fact that there's probably a generalized racism in the application of state highway and the way in which they do things, even if they do it via socioeconomic factors, is also true. But the only person who ever gets in trouble for saying any of those kinds of things is me. And so you gotta ask yourself during Black History Month, when the person with Palestinian kids and a Palestinian wife, who has been the person who has been talking about all these things, including street takeovers, because it's happened so many times over by where I live, why it didn't matter before, why it doesn't matter when I say it? And I gotta ask you during Black History Month if you know why. I bet you do. Nonetheless, I will again say what I always say during Black History Month, and it ironically enough aligns with the poem that Jamana did. She may have done it on purpose. It's "If We Must Die" by Claude McKay. "If we must die, let it not be like hogs hunted and pinned in an inglorious spot, while round us bark the mad and hungry dogs, making their mock at our accursed lot. If we must die, oh, let us nobly die, so that our precious blood may not be shed in vain, so that even the monsters we defy shall be constrained to honor us, though dead. Oh, kinsmen, we must meet the common foe, and though far outnumbered, let us show us brave, and for their thousand blows, deal one death blow. What, though, before is lies, the open grave? Like men, we'll face the murderous and cowardly pack, pressed to the wall, dying, but fighting And you put it in your pipe and smoke it.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. All right. So moving on, just wanted to, Council, Councilmember Fulcher.
I'm just gonna thank everybody for coming out and giving public comments, and I don't have anything to add.
Councilmember Hanzak.
I just want to thank those who reached out to me after last week's discussion that we had. I really appreciate those who reached out, and we were able to have one-on-one chats this week. And I just, I also want to share a few events, and I'm looking forward to discussions over the coming week. This week in Ward 5, the Peace Garden at Maple Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway, there's gonna be a cleanup. Originally, we thought that Friday, February 16th, would be a time for our youth to come out because it was not supposed to be a school day, but now it's makeup day for school. So there'll be a cleanup of the park with our city gardener from 9:00 to 11:30 at the Peace Park. And then on Tuesday, February 20th, there'll be a Ward 5 Zoom meeting at 7:00 PM. I'm trying to do those every third Tuesday of the month, and I'm looking forward to our March 3rd talk and walk with the mayor and the city manager and anybody else who wants to join us as we walk through the neighborhood and talk about local issues. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanzak. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out. If you did not have an opportunity to attend the annual Midwinter Play Day, that was on Sunday, we had a great time. We saw acrobats from the Washington Advances University that came out, and so the kids had a fantastic time. Yes, I mean, and their gymnasts are amazing. So if you haven't had a chance to check out the Midwinter Play Day, definitely check it out. As folks have already heard, yesterday, I was in Annapolis testifying for the Just Cause Bill. On tomorrow, we will, I will be at the Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League, that meeting, that will be at 6:30 in Rockville on Thursday. And I believe those are the major updates for me for this evening. And so with that, I'm gonna turn things over to our city manager, Mr. Gispierto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, and members of the council, and to all our guests. A question was asked with respect to an update on the District 20 night in Annapolis, and so with your permission, David, I'd like, I believe you have some information with respect to some of the logistics that the public might be interested in.
Sure. Thank you. On February 19th, the District 20 team is hosting District Night Out in Annapolis for constituents. The evening will begin with light refreshments at Rid Rid Wine from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, followed by an opportunity to see the floor session at 8:00 PM. Mayor, you are correct, there is a bus that's leaving from the city building, the community center. The city's rec bus is gonna provide transportation to and from Annapolis. However, there was pre-registration, and the bus is now full. There is still an opportunity to attend. You will not be provided, excuse me, transportation, but there is gonna be a link in the city manager's comments that allows you to register for and reserve your spot at Rid Rid Wine. So please, if you're still interested, although we don't have any more seats available, you can still attend, and we encourage residents to make their way on the 19th. Thank you, city manager.
Thank you very much, David. Some reports from a few of our departments, the Housing and Community Development Department. On Friday, February 23rd, from 7:30 to 9:30 PM, please join us in the Community Center Auditorium for Tacoma Arts, Soul of Langston, a one-man play. This play reveals the wit and wisdom of Langston Hughes's poetry and the worldwide impact of his literary career. A reminder concerning the call for public arts submissions. HCD is seeking proposals for a sculptural installation outside the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. The sculpture would reflect a theme of welcome or crossroads. The call for artists will close on March 3rd. A link with more information will be posted on the city manager's comments on the city website tomorrow. Montgomery County Planning, Housing and Parks Committee is hosting a work session on the Minor Master Plan on March 4th. The time is to be yet determined. This will be held at the Montgomery County Council Office Building at 100 Maryland Avenue, excuse me, third-floor hearing room. This will also be livestreamed at the link posted in tomorrow's website comments. HCD and the Public Works staff continue to welcome feedback from the city council on the proposed administrative regulations to traffic calming and sidewalk requests presented to council on Wednesday, January 17th. Pending council feedback, staff hopes to release draft regulations for public comment in March. From the police department. The police department will be holding a community meeting to discuss public safety issues in Ward 2, as indicated by Councilmember DeBala. Police department staff will be providing an update on recent incidents in Ward 2 and provide an overall overview of crime stats and trends, as well as security measures put in place to address these trends. The meeting will take place on Tuesday, March 19th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Tacoma Park Recreation Center at 7315 New Hampshire Avenue here in Tacoma Park. The meeting will be in-person. The meeting will be in person, and a Zoom webinar will also be available for folks to join and ask questions if they prefer to participate in that manner. Public Works Department. Yard Waste Collection on Monday, February 19th, will be canceled due to the President's Day holiday. Monday Yard Waste Collection will resume the following Monday. From the Recreation Department. Summer camp registration is opening next week for residents, so pick up a camp guide. Spring and summer classes will be listed in the Spring/Summer Guide, coming out with the March newsletter. School year childcare for 24-25 school year registration will open in mid-April. Please reach out to the Rec Department for more details. From my office, the city has just today received the following information concerning constant yield tax rate. The constant yield tax rate, effective July 1st of this year, 2024, is .5318. .5318. As a reminder, the constant yield tax rate is calculated by the Maryland State Department of Assessments and Taxation for each taxing authority in Maryland. It represents the real property tax rate for the coming tax year that will generate the same amount of revenue that was generated during the current tax year. As assessments increase, the constant yield tax rate decreases. And finally, an employee highlight. Housing Community Development would like to congratulate the city's planner, Alex Friedman, on accepting a position with the DC Department of Planning. Alex has served the city since April 2021, performing his duties as planner and stepping in as the Acting Planning and Development Services Manager in 2023. During his time with the city, Alex has advanced a number of critical projects, including the New Avenue Bike Ways, Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, Met Branch Trail Project, Minor Master Plan, and a number of other planning activities to enrich the quality of life in our city. Alex also spearheaded the development and adoption of the Public Space Management Plan and Toolkit, working closely with hired consultants and stepping in to complete the plan on his own. We wish Alex all the best in his future career endeavors. And that's all I have, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well, that was a blow. So we really appreciate all of the hard work that Alex has done for the city. So he's been a true testament to, and definitely a value add. So we will look forward to working with him as he's on the DC side, but definitely will consider this a loss. Councilmember Small.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we did note that, I didn't get a chance to say this, but I'm fully against the Minor Master Plan. They just lied to us all up in here, so I don't know, in case anybody's interested.
Councilmember Dibala.
I wanted to come back to the state highway proposal, and several councilmembers mentioned it, but I don't know that anybody directly asked the city manager if you could, now, talking to Alex is tough, because he's about to leave, but talking to the city planning department to see, or the Public Works, whichever one it is, that, to see that the input gets to state highway through the city and not only through residents.
Yeah, so I'd be glad to do that on behalf of the mayor council.
Alrighty, okay. So just wanna do a quick time check. Yep. All right, so we're gonna take a quick 10-minute break, and then we will reconvene with our first work session and the quarterly financial report for the second quarter. All right, thanks so much. Okay, party's over. Let's get started. All right. So now, our first work session for this evening is the quarterly financial report on the second quarter. And just as a reminder for folks, we have instituted time limits in terms of the presentation as well as Q and A. So for this particular presentation, we have a 10-minute presentation, followed by 10-minute Q and A. And so we will go ahead and set the timer for this one. All right, and so with that, I'm gonna turn things over to our city manager, Mr. Despirito.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Staff and I are pleased to present for your consideration, comment, and questions into the public, the fiscal year 2024 financial report, quarter two. Again, this covers the period in the current fiscal year, which began July 1st of 2023, cumulatively through December 31st of last year, 2023. The purpose of the second quarter financial report is to summarize revenue and expenditures, including all budget amendments that were previously addressed, numbers one and two, to identify any discrepancies in year-end trends and to enable inquiry and investigation of any inconsistencies. The limitations of the report is that it does not literally cover the last six weeks, i.e. the period of time since December 31st of last year. It is, these figures are influenced by the practices of external parties for both revenue and expenditure, and thus it is an imperfect forecasting tool. Nevertheless, we do believe we do believe there is value in the information contained, and it's certainly a managerial tool for us in terms of tracking both revenues and expenditures. I'd like to report that total revenue across all funds is 19.8 million, or 57% of the budgeted amount of anticipated revenues. Total expenditures is 17.1 million, or 33% of the budgeted amount for expected expenditures. Excess of revenue over expenditures of 2.7 million is due to unspent funds in the general fund and stormwater management fund primarily. Fund summary. The general fund, $3.2 million surplus as of December 31st. Special revenue fund, $118,000 deficit due to outstanding grant reimbursements. Stormwater management fund, $334,000 surplus due to pending projects, capital projects that have yet to begin and thus be expended. And finally, speed camera fund, $111,000 deficit due to delayed revenue from the implementation of a red light camera system. The general fund is the chief operating fund of the city. It supports the regular daily activities, including police protection, street and parking maintenance, and general administrative functions. The primary sources of general fund revenue are taxes and utility fees, as well as intergovernmental revenue. General fund revenues total 18.6 million, or 64% of the FY '24 budgeted amount as of this, this second quarter. General fund expenditures are 15.3 million, or 42% of the current budget's expected allocation for expenditures. The general fund revenue and expenses, whose percentage collected or expended differs by 20% or more year over year, is considered by my staff and I to be significant for discussion. Therefore, what we're presenting here are some primary examples of some that deviate beyond the 20% range. Significant differences, in this case, revenue collection between FY ' '23 and '24 at this juncture, quarter two. Penalties and interest, FY '24, 19,000 is, 19,000 collected, and that's at 26%, so a little above pace. Additions and abatements, that's property tax adjustment. For FY '24, it's $8,540, which is 43% difference. Use of money and property, FY '24 is 373,000, or 149%. Passport services, 22,000, or 50%. Tree fund, 117,000, or 100%. And that, by the way, was received in the third quarter of the fiscal year for FY '23. That was a transfer from the general fund. And sale of city property, $8,700, which is 174%. In that case, the city sold several vehicles during the reporting period. The earlier ones I mentioned, penalties and interest, additions and abatements, in both cases, there's really no regular pattern for penalties and interest that will normally fluctuate from year to year and quarter to quarter. For use of money and property, that was due to higher interest rates in FY '24 comparatively to last fiscal year. And for passport services, the reason for the difference was a decrease in the request for passport services compared to last year. So on the expenditure side, the differences FY '23 to '24. And FY, for police patrol operations in FY '24, 2.9 million expended. That's 59% of budgeted expenditures at this juncture. That's due to an increase in overtime for FY '24 to address the current increase, unfortunate increase in serious and violent crime that has occurred. So overtime details, and also dealing with that in conjunction with some vacancies, both among the sworn ranks and civilian. Police investigation services, 1.3 million. That's at 70% of expected expenditures for the year. That's also due to an increase in overtime to address the same issue. Recreation and community programs, $86,000 in expenditure. This is due to staff vacancies for part of the period of FY '23. Recreation camps, expenditures, $75,000, that's 52%. That's due to timing of camp programs between the two fiscal years. Community economic development, it's a smaller amount, 35,000. That's due to staff vacancy in the divisions. So that was not, not expended to the degree that it normally would. Here, I'll just try to summarize. And the speed camera fund, this is revenues and expenditures as they relate to, first, the speed camera fund. The revenue totals, 347,000, or 16% of the budget. And budgeted amount, again, this is due to the red light program delay. So revenues have not been coming into that fund. Both red light and speed cameras are in the speed camera fund, both of those programs, and it's the, primarily the red light program that hadn't, has not yet begun, thus revenue's not collected. On the expenditure side, total 457,000, almost 458,000, or 27% of the budgeted amount. And the budget deficit as of December 31st, 2023, was 111,000 in the speed camera fund. A few notes. The red light camera revenue was included in FY '24 budget, but none has been realized due to this delay in the program implementation. Beginning in March of 2024, we believe seven cameras will be installed along New Hampshire Avenue, Piney Branch Avenue, and Philadelphia Avenue. Adjustments for the speed camera fund revenue assumptions will be made at a later budget amendment. In the stormwater fund, on the revenue side, total 505,000, or 65% of the budgeted amount it's received from the county monthly. And on the expenditures end of it, approximately $171,000, or 16% of the budgeted amount, and that is due to pending CIP projects. So the expenditures have been low, but spending to come with the advent of these capital projects. And the revenue was a feature of when we received funds from the county. Next, next steps. This relates primarily to the budget development process that's underway this month. Matter of fact, February 21st, there will be, as mayor council knows, there will be a discussion coming on rec center, potential rec center project funding, next steps, knowing that the recreational center project is a council budget priority. I will host, I intend to have budget discussions with council members in the coming weeks to provide some overview of where we think we are prior to the budget document being presented to you, but also importantly, especially for me, being new, an opportunity to ask you some very specific questions about your, you know, some of the parameters of the budget, and some of the options, and some of the things that we are considering as staff, to get maybe some initial feedback that would help guide me in preparing a final proposed budget to come to you, which will be, as it says, in March 27th, is the public presentation. I intend to get the budget document to you about a week earlier than that, so you have some time to see that. In April, calendar is April 1st, department budget presentation number one. April 3rd, and that's, I think, I believe, a special meeting. April 3rd is the department budget presentation number two. April 10th, public hearing number one and council work session number one. April 17th, council work session number two. April 24th, public hearing number two and budget reconciliation number one. April 29th is budget reconciliation number two. And finally, in May, May 1st, budget reconciliation number three, which would be a beautiful thing to bring it in for a landing on my birthday. I'll, I take that as a positive omen, but I'm new. May 8th, voting session, first reading. May 15th, voting session, second reading. And finally, May 16th is when the tax rate would be remanded to the county and state following that May 15th action by the mayor and council. At this point, I would just wish to say thank you for listening, and my staff and I are available here to try to answer any questions or listen to any comments that any of you may have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, Rob, I think that there are, I guess, city manager Desperto, depending, I don't know what your predilections are.
Just Rob.
Excellent. That, I think that your schedule is hopeful. I'm not going to say optimistic, but I'm excited to see it. I think that you're going to get there because you've got a pretty stalwart staff immediately underneath you to make sure that people are hitting the numbers. The question that I have for you is, I have two questions. The first one is about the numbers. And at a base level, the presentation here is basically, since we're essentially at the halfway point, figuring out where we're not quite at half and where we're over half, just as a base level of discussion. Thanks. And then the second thing is, I was wondering if it would be possible for you to consider, in your infinite wisdom and executive powers as city manager, to institute the financial director as treasurer? You don't have to answer now, but I do think it would be a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Small. Just trying to see if there are any other questions. Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah, thank you. So continuing in that vein, so general fund expenses at this time this year are higher than they were last time, this time last year by percentage. And I, I want to confirm, is most of that because of the various increases in police overtime, which we're gonna, we can, I have a separate question on, but the main reason that the general fund expenses are higher, is that the main thing that went, that is, is over
Yes, councilman, I just want to point out on page six, the significant differences in expenditure collection, FY '23 to '24, these are the significant differences that we can see between '23, fiscal year '23 and '24.
Right.
And these significant differences, meaning that the difference is over 20%.
Right.
So you can see in the list that one of the items is the police patrol operation. The other, the other list is the police investigation services.
Right.
These are the items that shows that the expenditure is much higher in this year compared to last year.
Right. Okay. So it is mostly, in terms of dollar and number of percentage, it's mostly the police money.
Occurrence of those violent crime.
Yeah.
In the city. So that just, police department has to, you know, handle those cases. So that incur a lot of overtime, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Susan. And to your point, your question, Councilmember Dibala, in the second work session topic this evening, in the budget amendment, we are happy to address that in some detail. And I know council's in receipt of a memorandum from the chief.
Yeah. And, and I have another question for that, one way for later, but for this exercise. So red light camera revenues, can we say a little bit more about what the current status of when we think this is going to come online? I read the, I've read the material, but, but I know there's, there's more to it than.
Good evening. Interesting evening this evening. Absolutely. So, so we've finally gotten approval from State Highway.
Yes, from the state.
So we are scheduled to have the cameras installed in March, and they're going to be scheduled in a series of weeks. So I think it's to, to the first week, to the second week, and so on and so forth. The first 30 days of the program, we're going to have to issue only warnings, but the program is up and running, and we're very excited about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. And so just to piggyback, and I'm sorry, I know you just went and had a seat, but maybe Susan, the finance director, can answer this question. Given the delayed start, does that mean that we should be prepared to accept the fact that the projected revenues were not as likely to receive? Because, I mean, don't get me wrong, people could, could run a lot of red lights. I know New Hampshire Avenue probably could just, you know, probably could make this money and then some in a month. But is the, are there thoughts around the real possibility of us not being able to reach the anticipated revenues as a result of the delay?
In the current fiscal, in the current fiscal year, yeah, it's starting in the last quarter. Really, the program will be in effect about the last quarter of the year, not, not 12 months of fiscal year.
Yeah, I think if you, if you looked at one of the slides on the financial forecast, it talked about, and during the, the next budget amendment, we'll get, have a better idea of the revenue that's going to be generated by the red light cameras. When we estimated revenue, we factored it. So we estimated it for the first year. Didn't happen the first year. We estimate it very low, because we factored in that there may be a delay. So we may come back in that last three months, we may have estimated a certain number of expected revenue, and it may be, it may exceed that. But to answer your first question, yes, we're going to come back in the fourth quarter, and I, and we're not going to achieve all the revenue that's expected for this fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just, I had one question about this. Is it the same number of cameras that we had expected to have before? Like, it seems like we have more cameras than we had thought we were going to get.
We originally submitted several locations to State Highway. The only one that was not approved was the one that you would expect we would need it the most, and that's New Hampshire and University. The State Highway administration did not approve our cameras at that location, because their, their answer was they are not approving any, any automated camera enforcement, new automated camera enforcement on any purple line roadways. So we are, we, we didn't get denied, but we were told that we must wait for the purple line construction to finish before we can install those cameras. So these were the original numbers. So we, what we do is we're looking at intersections that have, have the most collision data, the most violations. By far, New Hampshire and University, our two sections by far have, that outnumber all of the other occurrences in the city, all of the other seven sites.
Yeah. No, I had expected that you were going to say that part, and it doesn't surprise me that what you said about S H A and/or the purple line. I hope and encourage you to continue to go forth against them and their, the constraints they put on you and your officers with regard to that area.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember, how's that?
Just a quick question while we have the chief up here. Good evening. I just wondered if you could comment just a little bit on, on the police, the police and the violent crime. I haven't, I haven't had the privilege of being able to sit in on a public safety conversation lately in the city. So could you just talk a little bit about the rate of violent crime and kind of give us a sense of what, what we're seeing in the, in the financial dollars and what that means for your staff?
Absolutely.
I mean, that looks like your staff are also really overstretched, which sounds really tough.
Yeah, it's, so just, just for background. Yeah, it, it's, so just, just for background, um, we experienced a 49, 49% increase in violent crime in the city of Tacon Park in, uh, 2023. Now, understand that when I say 49%, the number of overall crimes in the city are small in comparison anyway. But imagine almost, you know, 50% more crime. So what we've been required to do, um, is have overtime details in various areas. So what we do is we don't just randomly deploy officers to locations. Where we deploy officers is through intelligence, through our crime analysts doing data, data analysis and saying, okay, this is the time that we're gonna have the most carjackings, or the most burglaries, or the most thefts. Uh, so that's what you're seeing. What you're seeing is a combination of two different things. A combination of the need for us to address these crime issues, and we are addressing that through overtime. And that would be in the Operations Section, the 2300 section. You're also seeing, because of the increase in crime, the overtime related to the 20, 2400 section, which is Investigations. We have to respond and investigate these incidents, incidents, which is, results in overtime as well. Uh, we are also not fully staffed, so a lot of that overtime is for, as you just said, we have to backfill for the officers that we don't have. For the longest time, we were fully staffed. We're now seeing retirements. We saw one individual go out of law enforcement. We saw one individual live two hours away from here, take a job when a law enforcement agency close to them. So we traditionally have been fully staffed. So I think a question came up from Councilmember Gibson. Some of this overtime will be offset by lapsed salary, because we are not fully staffed. So we may have an increase in, in, in overtime in those categories, but we're not gonna be paying the salaries of the people that we're backfilling, if that makes any sense.
May I ask how many officers you're short now?
Uh, we are currently down, so our sworn allotment is 43, and I think we are at 39 now. But, but understand, uh, in addition to those 39, we have three officers that are not currently in active duty. So we may have 39, but we only have 36 working. So that's part of the problem as well. It's not just vacancies, it's that we have officers that are injured or for other reasons are not on active duty.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fulcher?
It's definitely disappointing about the cameras at University and New Hampshire, especially with construction going on, because of the value of the life of the construction workers that are there, working on those roads. Did S H A give you a reason other than there is construction going on in that area that they don't think that now is a good time to put in cameras? Cause like, oh, why might?
That, that's a really good question. And no, there was no real, uh, descriptive explanation other than we can't install them. So there are two ways. We can install permanent cameras and temporary cameras. So what we said, can we just do this, not the stationary ones that are permanent, but the temporary cameras that can be moved around? The answer was no. Uh, we are not the only jurisdiction that has asked for additional, uh, automated enforcement along the purple line. So I, I, I can tell you, um, there have been delays with the State Highway Administration. We were frustrated because the, everyone knows, this is not, automatic safety is not for revenue generation. It is for traffic safety, and that is one of the worst intersections in this area. Not just in the city, but in this area. So not having cameras there does not help traffic and public safety, not only in the city, but obviously that intersection is not just our jurisdiction. So our, our hope is that, um, and it's purple line construction, so you know how that is. It could be two years, it could be three years, it could be 10, oh, you said it, it could be 10 years. So, but we're hopeful for, for, for public safety, that we're able to put them at that intersection.
I, I seem to recall that S H A had basically asked that the Maryland State Legislature sort of not pass certain things, because they were gonna promise to be a better partner in working with us, and so
Indeed.
I would, you know, really appreciate if we could look to our State Legislature for some ideas.
Or even get the meeting that we're supposed to have.
Yeah, so, um, my understanding, and, and again, given the number of bills that are currently, I think everyone has access to the bill list. My understanding is that there were, um, Delegate Charcutian had put something forward, they were supposed to be better partners. We need to comb through all of the plethora of bills, um, that are currently, um, at play right now to see whether or not purple line or construction, um, uh, in the areas of construction would, would make sense. But again, there, there's a number of S H A bills that are currently under review. Councilmember Di Balla?
Yeah, following up short of that, is there a way to ask Delegate Charcutian's office to ask S H A for an exception here?
We can follow up with Ann offline to see whether or not that's something that's feasible.
Just thought we might try.
Any help that could be provided. As, as I said, this is a, this is a traffic and public safety issue. You know, I, I don't know that, that, that State Highway is gonna alter that, because if they give an exception for us, they may have to for other jurisdictions. But it's, it's, it's definitely worth a try.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much. I don't see any other lights. We really appreciate, um, coming out. And let's move on to the next item, um, the FY 2024 Budget Amendment Number Three. Am I passing that on to you, City Manager Di Spirito? And just for everyone's attention, this is another one that is a 10-minute presentation, followed by a 10-minute Q and A.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, we, uh, my staff and I are pleased to, uh, bring this information to you publicly. We, uh, this is, uh, a discussion, uh, not action proposed this evening, but discussion to obtain, to share information, obtain any of your thoughts, questions, comments, and perhaps direction, if you have it, uh, so that we could bring this back to you at a near-future date for a vote. At your pleasure. This is a proposed FY 24 Budget Amendment Number Three, third one in the current fiscal year, FY 24. And, uh, for the public, uh, just to remind the public, the fiscal year, Mayor and Council, uh, adopted in May 17th of last year, a new budget which began last July 1st. And we are in the midst of that fiscal year. Since the last amendment, either new operational needs have arisen with unforeseen costs, and additional expenditures need to be addressed, which require changes to the approved fiscal year FY 24 budget. In addition, the salary and fringe benefits increased due to promotion. Police staff overtime expenses have increased due to a rise in serious crime and staff shortages. Staff from the Human, uh, wanna acknowledge that staff from the Human Resources Department worked very hard to calculate the salaries and fringe benefits adjustment for the covering period. In Public Works, a new grant receipt is accounted for in this Budget Amendment. And, uh, for some further details, I would respectfully like to, uh, turn to our Finance Director, Susan, for some additional information that she would like to impart in our presentation.
Mayor and the council members, um, I am going to give a, a high-level overview of our, uh, FY 24 third Budget Amendment. It will be best if we can take a look at the cover sheet, uh, on the second last page of the cover memo that has the green chart on there that actually shows the summary of all the, um, departmental expenditure, revenue in, uh, General Fund and in, uh, Speed Camera Fund as well as the Opera Fund. So, um, in the third Budget Amendment, the city has an overall revenue increase of $364,859. The total amount is reflected on that, on this particular table. That amount include $86,859 increase in the General Fund, $80,000 increase in the Speed Camera Fund, and $198,000 increase in the Opera Fund. The overall revenue increase in Opera Fund and Speed Camera Fund is due to the Fed Fund target rate increase, increases, contributing to the interest income increase of the Speed Camera and Opera checking accounts. As for the General Fund, the net impact is an overall revenue increase of $86,859. The total revenue increase is $300,875, mainly due to the interest revenue increase in the bond trust account and the General Fund checking account. In the General Fund expenditure, the greatest impact is the budget increase of the police overtime expenses totaling $328,981. The Chief provided a memo explaining the need for the budget increases. In the Housing and Community Development Department, the overall impact of the amendment is the budget expenses reduction of $115,944. And the Housing Director also provided a memo detailing the reason for expenditure reduction in the Housing Department. And I would like to bring you to the tension of the last page of the covering memo. And, um, this particular table with the title of FY 24 General Fund Adopted Budget and Amendment. The table actually provided an estimated General Fund balance change from the first Budget Amendment to the third Budget Amendment. The initial fund balance is 11 million, 11.2 million. After the third Budget Amendment, the projected fund balance is 10.7 million. The balance reduction is mainly due to the net expenditure increase of $104,000 and $500,000 in the first and second Budget Amendment respectively. So this is, um, the, uh, the changing fund balance of the General Fund, uh, throughout these three Budget Amendments. So, um, if you have any question, uh, yeah, we can, I can help to answer.
Thank you so much, Director Chung. We really appreciate, um, your work on this. I know that one question, um, was raised, um, about the fact that we saw some of these, um, increases in revenues due to, um, basically interest that we're getting off of, um, off of the money sitting in the bank. But those increases are currently, the majority looks like they're in the ARPA and the Speed Camera Fund. So is there a particular reason why we wouldn't move any interest gained off of those dollars into the General Fund?
I think I have, uh, a discussion with our Opera Manager this afternoon. And, um, uh, we discussed about the use of the, um, interest earned in the bond unused fund balance, because, uh, we realized that, uh, the, um, the library construction, the budget, it's, seems like we, we are, uh, having some, um, emergency use of the, um, the, the, the contingency fund of the library. So maybe it's a good idea for those in, interest income to be transferred into the bond fund, so we'll allow us to have more funding, um, for the library construction.
Yeah, but I, I, I guess my question, and, and I appreciate you saying that about, about the library, but I guess my question is more general. If we have monies that are sitting in an account, whether it's, you know, the, the ARPA account or the, the red light camera revenue accounts, is it necessarily the case that any interest gained on those dollars from those funds automatically obligated to those same funds, right? So interest I get off of ARPA automatically becomes ARPA money, and therefore I have to use for an ARPA purpose, or is the interest something that I can move somewhere else?
Definitely, it, it's required to be used for that particular fund, and it's designated to that fund only. Yeah, this is the way that we have been, um, you know, uh, tracking the, the interest income for each fund. That's why we have different interest accounts set up for that.
And, and if I may, um, the, the Treasury Rule currently states that any interest gained from an ARPA account, uh, can be used for any purpose. So theoretically, that those dollars are, are found dollars that could be transferred into the General Fund or repurposed for any purpose. And it does not have the same obligations of needing to be obligated by '24 and, and, uh, spent by '26. So that is something that we began talking about, and different ways that we could use this, you know, this sort of found money. Um, and we'll follow up with you about sort of what our plan will be for that, for that use. Certainly, the library is something that's, uh, you know, on our minds in terms of additional funding sources.
Thank you so much for that, cause that's, that's something that I actually think is quite interesting for us to consider going forward. Like whether or not, um, now, that may be our practice, right? I'm, I have money sitting in the bank and I'm getting interest off of it, and, and maybe I'm earmarking those dollars for a specified purpose. And so I'm just gonna do, make it my policy, that any interest that I gain off of those dollars goes towards that same purpose. But it would seem to me that if, if it is possible, let's say I have money, I'm getting interest on these dollars, but I don't necessarily need all of the money that I may gain with the interest for that purpose. If it's possible for me to move those dollars to the General Fund without sacrificing anything, because that money is just sitting in the bank, waiting on me to pay my contractors, that might be something that we may wanna consider in order to ensure that we're kind of having, being able to take advantage of some of those revenues in the General Fund. And I bring that up because it does, you know, on, on this page where we talk about the General Fund and the showing that deficit, but we're seeing, um, we're seeing, um, the, the, the interest gains in some of these other fund accounts. I think that also could kinda help with helping people to understand a little bit in terms of the discrepancies, cause you see these gains in revenues, but you're still showing, um, a growth in the gap on, um, in the General Fund, if that makes sense, between revenues and expenditures.
So, uh, as, um, Andrew does just explain, there is a way for us to transfer the Opera Fund interest income into the General Fund. But for the other funds, Speed Cam, Stormwater, as well as the, um, Special Revenue Fund, we do maintain the, in, the interest in that particular fund. And this is how, um, our, our, um, different funding, um, policy is being set up. And the interest earned from that account is reflected on that particular fund.
Okay, thank you. And one other question, you know, Budget Amendment Number Three is always hard for me. Because it's at that weird place where, you, you know, you don't fully know what your expenditures are. You full, you don't fully know what your revenues are, and a lot of times, because I say all the time, our, our budget is people and capital, right? So in terms of, so we're counting, um, some of the vacancies, um, the vacancies to date in terms of the salaries and potential cost savings associated with unfilled positions. And is that through this period, or we're projecting it not all the way through the end of the fiscal year, correct?
I believe this is just up to, up to this, uh, period.
Just for this period?
Yeah, just for, for this period.
So is it only not from the beginning, like, the entirety of that vacancy? Is it from?
Some positions, you, you ask a great question. Part of the answer is that some of these positions are vacant and have been, but are actively being recruited. It could be that we're not successful in filling them during the balance of the fiscal year, or we could fill them at some point, maybe as soon as next week, and expenditures will be drawn. So that's why it's difficult for us to, um, portray that a, I'll say, a savings would continue with certainty. So we, as, uh, Director indicated, we, uh, give you in essence a snapshot of where we are now.
Okay, and it's only for this quarter, not cumulative up until now?
It is actually accumulated from the first quarter until now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Councilmember Di Balla?
Yeah, two things in a similar category, so we have a budget amendment that covers additional overtime that's effectively already been spent for the police department. Are we at some point going to also get a projection through the rest of the year? Is that budget amendment four, or is that coming separately? Just want to know what the timing on that is.
I believe we do anticipate a budget amendment four, as opposed to just closing out the year and having to reconcile differences as a carryover or, you know, otherwise reflected in the fund balance. Of course, from a management standpoint, staff, the chief, Finance Director, we've all been actively trying to project our best estimates of the balance of the year.
Okay.
So yes, we are looking at that, but a number of things influence it, and, you know, again, we can wrap, you know, bring you more precise numbers with, when we get to that closer to the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
And if I could add, Rob, the numbers that are included for overtime are inclusive of the estimates to get us to the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, they are?
So they cover, they cover past overages and estimates for the future.
Okay, so what we have now already includes an estimate, which may or may not
It's an estimate, right.
Depending on what happens. Okay, that's good to know. And second, completely different topic, I saw that the H V A system had been replaced, and I just want to mention the possibility, depending on what equipment that was purchased, of whether it would qualify under the IRS direct pay for energy-efficient equipment, and the person on staff who knows the answer to that, I believe, is Dory Estrada, who took the training on the IRS direct pay. And it's, it's worth five minutes to ask, because if it's true, it'll be a lot of money. That's it.
We're talking about the electric vehicle?
It's the same program as the electric vehicle, but I wondered if you might just double-check if it applied to the H V A C's equipment that got purchased over the winter, the emergency purchase for this building? Yeah, we don't know, that's why we want to ask.
Yeah, we'll follow up with Tor about that, thank you, it's a good point.
Okay, I am not seeing any additional lights, so I think that that's it. Just as a reminder for my colleagues, this budget amendment will come back to us for a vote, so please, please, please follow up with any of the staff if you have any questions regarding the budget amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Chung. All right, with that, would someone like to make a motion for us to adjourn for this evening?
I motion.
Thank you so much, everyone have a good evening.